You can purchase it. He's gonna talk to the people.
How many times have you been funny?
Cause I guess the guy's gonna move his way back.
You know, he had to stay on the high spots.
But I think the reason.
Oh, I I had. Well, we started.
She said that he's looking to put it up.
One Thursday, but then it's Thursday, so.
But she goes, I would never.
We'll see how that goes every year.
That's what I think.
All right, well, call the city of Kiwanee Common Council meeting for Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Let the record show all members are present with the exception of Zimmerman absent excused. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of prayer and silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item three, approval of April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, common council minutes and April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, reorganization meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve this.
Uh, both together, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item four, public comment communication. Is there anyone here to speak under public comment? Is there anyone here to speak under public comment? If there's no one here to speak under public comment, public comment will close. Item five, boards, commissions, committee and staff reports, historic preservation commission, personnel committee, plan commission, finance committee, public works committee and staff reports. Any questions or concerns on any of the reports?
No second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mayor's report, item six, uh, A, we have Representative Joel Kitchens with us tonight, and he's gonna give us a brief update on things happening in the state of Wisconsin. If you'd like to come up, please, Joel. Welcome to Kiwanee. Nice to see you again. You bet.
Uh, so right now, in the Capitol, we're in the middle of the budget process. The way that it works is the governor presents his budget proposal like in February, then over the next several months, the joint finance committee goes through every item line by line, puts things in, takes things out, holds public hearings on that, and handles one department at a time and 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 then the new budget's supposed to be done by July first is when the the previous budget ends. So that's where we are right now. Um, it's still fairly early in the process. So a lot's been made that we have a very large budget surplus, the most we've ever had, seven billion dollars. But that's a little bit misleading because a good bit of that is already spoken for, you know, things like Medicaid, we know that they're gonna go up. And it also, most of that money was one-time money because it really resulted from all of the federal pandemic relief money that came in. So, you know, you send everybody a check, they go out and spend it, and our sales tax moved the highest they've ever been. So we have to be really careful with that money not to create new programs that are then gonna leave us in a deficit in the future when we don't have that money. So that being said, of the money that we do have that we can spend on things going forward, I think local government's gonna be a big recipient of a lot of that. There will also be a tax cut. But the the part that's come out now, and I don't know if you saw anything about that, but the shared revenue program, um, which is money we send around to all of the local governments, county, you know, towns, everything else, um, and it's supposed to be used for operations and services. And it, the money has been frozen for over twenty years now. So what we're gonna do this time, and we are in agreement with the governor on on the on the basics of it, there's a lot to be worked out in there. But that we would tie it to one cent of the five cent sales tax would go towards share of revenue in the future. So the really good thing about that is that that then will increase with inflation. The sales tax, I think there's never been one year where sales tax actually went down. So that should gradually increase all time. Now, the formula in the past for shared revenue um, kind of favored larger cities a lot, and the towns actually got the short end of it. Um, Kiwanee, you guys will, I should say first off that under the plan that we've developed right now that I think will be what what happens, every local government will get at least a ten percent increase. Um, but we're also doing some things to help the formula, cause there were a lot of places I think that really got a again, the short end of it. Um, Kiwanee right now gets, I think, seven hundred and or wait a minute, I have it down here. And I did send all of the the printout to Jeff earlier today. I don't know if you saw that.
I got it late yesterday.
So yeah, if anybody wants to see that and how it works for for everybody around the state and all of that, um, Jeff, Jeff can get that to you. But, um, let's see, sorry about this. I just brought the ones that were kind of.
You know, it was a population of five thousand or less was supposed to get a bump?
Yeah.
Percentage, I mean, that that might have been different than shared revenue too. That was, um.
Yeah, that was part of the shared revenue and how they changed the formula kind of. So right now, the city of Kiwanee gets five hundred and forty-four thousand, almost five hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, with with the new shared revenue, they'll get an additional seventy-seven thousand. Um, so, you know, about a fourteen percent increase. Now, there are towns that got several hundred percent increase, but they also got very little in the past. Algoma, by contrast, only got ten percent, but they made out really well on the past formula. I think a lot of it was based on assessed valuation, and Algoma, I think, had less than you guys did. So they only get a ten percent increase, but it results in ninety-four thousand dollars extra for them. So even though the percentage is less, they get more money. So that, I think, is, uh, is kind of the biggest thing going on is right now as relates to local government. There will be more money coming out in road aids and that kind of thing, but that'll be coming down the line. We haven't haven't gotten to that yet. So there are other things I guess I could talk about, but why don't I open it up if anybody has any questions about anything?
Can I, I guess, just start then, Joel?
Sure.
You know, there's been a lot of great proposals, uh, that are out there. I don't know the likelihood of some of this is gonna get passed. Um, but road improvement, some of these other, I guess, special type projects that could be coming through the pipeline, and I keep hearing all these billions of dollars that are in the surplus.
Yeah.
The reality is, is the money there, or is this just gonna look good going forward, and the money's not ever gonna really come, cause it's not there?
It will. I I think people should, again, I think local government is gonna be one of the focuses of the surplus that we do have, but the the surplus is so exaggerated that, you know, everybody thinks they're gonna get huge amounts of money, and they're not. But I do think local government will be a focus. So I think road aids will increase this time. I think I can say that for sure.
What about personal property tax? That was mentioned also.
And that, in our proposal, that's eliminated now completely.
Okay.
So for that, the the non-business owners out there, that's the the property tax that every business pays on the equipment that they own. And it's kind of an unfair tax, and it's also very cumbersome for businesses to have to inventory that all the time and 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 report that. Now, the state will backfill that, so that your if we didn't backfill it, what would happen is that would come off, and then everybody's home property taxes would go up. So, but that won't happen because we're gonna backfill that, that property taxes, that is, we take it off.
And and what about, there was a lot of mention also about support for police?
Yeah, part of this proposal too is that, especially for emergency, yeah, for emergency personnel, I should have mentioned that. There will, there is some money in our plan anyway that, uh, that will help with that as well. And also, there's a fund in there to incentivize shared services with other communities. So if there are communities, you know, towns around you that might want to share some of your services, there's an opportunity to incentivize those.
Beautiful.
So. If our, if our plan goes through. There's also a bunch about Milwaukee. It doesn't pertain to us here, but Milwaukee is a train wreck financially and um, probably we will end up allowing them to do a sales tax in their area because the alternatives are either we bail them out, which I don't think anybody in northeast Wisconsin wants to bail out Milwaukee, or they go bankrupt, and that hurts all of us with bond ratings and everything else. So we don't want them to go bankrupt. Um, and as our biggest city, we really, we want Milwaukee to succeed. It's just they're making it very difficult.
So. There's been another, a lot of, uh, discussion on the media about, um, the Brewer Stadium. So where are we at with Brewer Stadium? I understand there's like four hundred and some million dollars of needed repairs to the facility and the owner may threaten to leave the state.
Yeah, there's always that game. I think last I heard it was like three hundred and some million, but maybe it's going up.
There was just one broadcast I heard. I don't know.
But in any case, it's a lot of money. Um, my guess is gonna be, you know, there, the people like from our area are not gonna wanna support that. Especially, I represent part of Brown County, and Brown County did all of Lambo themselves. So there's, you know, for the, to turn around then and put state money towards the Brewers, doesn't go over very well in Brown County. Um, but we also, we own the stadium now, so, which is probably was a mistake way back, but since we own it, and the same thing with the, uh, with the Bucks, we ended up putting money towards them. We owned it. So we're stuck with these obligations, and if they leave, we're stuck with the stadium. So, you know, we're still working on that. It's, there's a ways to go. One of the things to consider on that, though, is that the the player salaries, whenever a player plays in out of state, they pay state taxes towards that. So that those income taxes actually from all the players that play there do add up to a pretty substantial amount. Not to mention all the revenue generated within the stadium from, you know, sales tax on that.
Definitely an asset. I mean, we understand it's just gotta be managed properly.
I'm guessing in the end we'll find a way to get it done.
Okay.
Um, but there'll, there'll be a lot of people voting against it.
Does anyone have anything for Joel while we have him here for tonight?
So with the, with help with the roads, it seems like, uh, a lot of the money went to the bigger cities this past year. Is there a way to equalize that a little bit more?
I hope so. I I think that, um, you know, in my party, the Democrats, you know, they they represent the big cities, so they're always gonna advocate for that. So, um, you know, I think for us, we will be advertising or advocating for the for the smaller municipalities, the towns and stuff. So hopefully that's the way that it that it goes, but there's always that conflict there. So.
Okay, anyone have anything else?
Well, I'll hang around and see what's going on in Kiwanee. It looks like you've been doing things right since you don't have a.
You know, we appreciate the update, Joel. It's great seeing you again.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Um, under mayor's report, uh, the only thing I really have is I just wanted to give a mention. I could do it under announcements, but, uh, the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Kiwanee Police Department, uh, there will be fundraiser, uh, benefit, uh, celebrating that and a fundraiser at Classics on the twentieth of this month, Saturday. I believe it opens up at five thirty until midnight. And, uh, accepting donations, door prizes, raffle items, anything, uh, reach out to the chief and, uh, she can certainly see that it gets appropriated. So that's all I have under the mayor's report. I have seven unfinished business. A, approve addendum number seventeen for municipal consult of services with Cedar Corporation. So this was on the agenda last month. It it then got sent back to finance for, uh, additional review. And, uh, finance has, uh, since then, uh, sent it back to council for approval, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve addendum number seventeen for municipal consult of services for Cedar Corp.
Yeah, a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Please call roll. Uh. Gotcha, didn't I?
Yeah. How do, how do we go?
Anywhere in mind.
Okay. Uh, uh, Alderman Shelton?
Hi.
Alderman Brewster?
Hi.
Alderman Blaham?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman was Nikki?
Yes.
Alder Conley?
Yes.
Alder Woman Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Seven B, approve revised invoice by Pier and Waterfront Solutions for dock repairs at Kiwanee Marina in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Previously had been approved for a maximum of thirty thousand dollars, and there was a slight overrun uh, in those repairs. So that again was recommended up from finance. So do we have a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to authorize payment of invoice five nine eight six to Pier and Waterfront Solutions in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Alder Woman Nelson?
Hi.
Alderman Conley?
Hi.
Alderman was Nikki?
Hi.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Blaha?
Yes.
Alderman Brewster?
Hi.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item eight, new business, eight A, approve neon run for June fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Um. Heath, do you have a little background on that?
Uh, Robin, were you on, or Heath, either one of you? Um, this is, um, this is a request from the High School Honor Society, National Honor Society. Uh, it's a relatively small, uh, walk run thing, uh, with two, two participants. They have a route which is shown in your packet. Uh, that we're gonna be running through. It'll be a donation type thing with a chicken, um, proceeds for school, um, scholarships, yeah, for the scholarship program. Um, uh, Robin's already previously reviewed this and has, uh, no issues with the, with the running as it, as they have it advertised. Uh, this will be on June fourth, around ten AM to twelve PM.
Yeah, noted it is, there is no fiscal impact to this request, so. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the neon run for June fourth, two thousand twenty-three?
Motion to approve the neon run for June fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Eight B, adopt a resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for a conditional use for a daycare facility located at one zero nine Duval Street. Brett Michael Webb and Spider Troy Webb, owners and applicants.
Yeah, this was, uh, last year they came through for a condition use application and for, well, along with a rezoning application and for CSM. CSM was never recorded, but the rezone was was approved. The condition we use last year is for residential as an accessory use. The principal use was supposed to be artwork, art creation, and then sales. Uh, what they've elected to do with this application is to trade out the artwork creation and sales with the daycare facility on the lower level of the existing bar house. Um, this is for a maximum of sixteen children ages, uh, birth through four years uh, for a operation Monday through Friday from six AM to six PM. Um, included with the, uh, resolution is the conditions which basically reflect everything that they said they were going to do. So it reflects in the limitations of their request. Well, and Plan Commission reviewed this last week and recommended approval.
We did. State will come in and inspect. Everything will be inspected, so.
Then that'll be all over the school.
Yeah, what they were looking for us was for um, to approve the daycare facility, and the state will come in and do their inspection, but they needed to get this first before the state came in.
So I, uh, have a motion to adopt the resolution, uh, for the condition we use for the daycare facility located at one zero nine Duval Street.
Also.
And it is, it is approved under conditional use to the D C daycare facility.
It's an authorized condition.
Correct, yes.
Also.
Okay, and any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Eight C, approve invoice for services by Peters Construction for crushing of fill materials in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-five cents. So I know that we had had them here when they were taking care of Fisherman's Point, and we had additional fill or concrete material behind the wood steel building. And overrun was, they were already here. They already moved in, right?
Yep, so they're, they're bed, right, China, me and myself and Heath had talked, did a more of a contractual agreement. They were giving us like a five dollar and change bid across the belt for done. The irregular shape pile, and then the moisture content at the bottom of the pile, the piles been there for twenty plus years of asphalt. Led for it to be slightly overran to my initial estimate of material. So for our purchasing policy, I'll bring this back for you guys for approval before we can issue payment.
And that over amount is two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
Yeah, two eleven fifty-five, definitely fifty-six cents, cause it's forty-nine, nine, 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 but uh. Yeah, I just wanna make point that they saved us a lot of money because with them being your Fisherman's Point already, that saved us probably five, eight thousand dollars in utilization fees, because the initial bid that we were getting last year for this was about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, and that.
And that's great clean fill for
for whatever.
Yeah, yeah. So. All right, do we have a motion to approve the invoice, uh, for services for Peters Construction? Construction for crushing of film in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-five cents?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Alderman Shelton?
Hi.
Alderman Brewster?
Hi.
Alderman Blaham?
Yes.
Alder Woman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman was Nikki?
Yes.
Alderman Conley?
Yes.
Alder Woman Nelson?
Hi.
Motion carried. Eight D, adopt a resolution authorizing resolution for voting infrastructure grant application, Cedar Corporation.
Yeah, this is a requirement for the voting infrastructure grant application at Cedar Corp, along with Edgewood Resources is preparing for us for the Marina, for, uh, help with the Marina funding, um, through the E N R. Uh, this is a required resolution, so the authorizing resolution is actually listed. I took the base model and dumped it into the anywhere standard format, so that it can process, sign, and send, sent over to Cedar Corp as part of our, uh, process.
Okay, do we have a motion, uh, for the resolution for the voting infrastructure grant application?
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing resolution for voting infrastructure grant application of Cedar Corp.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Eight E, approve sanitation and recycling, recycling agreement with Harders Fox Valley Disposal for a five-year term of service.
Okay, uh, this one is, uh, we're currently on the last year of a three-year contract with orders. Uh, the current contract includes, um, cap CPI of four percent uh, per year, so the increase would not be more than four percent at any one point. Um, and and over the last three years, the cap, the actual CPI has been over four percent every year, including six point nine percent this year. And they've never come back and renegotiated. They just sort of swallowed the increases and tolerated it. There's also increases in tipping fees at the recent, at the receiving zone, which is in Brown County. And the recycling fees have also gone up, so everything's been going up. So when they came through with this contract, they they requested an approval that was often also longer uh, from three years to five years. They're proposing a bump up of uh, increase of from twelve dollars, eleven cents per month to fourteen dollars and ninety cents per month, starting in January, which is an increase of about thirty-three dollars a year. Um, and also requesting no cap CPI, so that the CPI, which is set by the federal government, they, the increase is based on the CPI. Um, so they don't get hammered again, and they're a little gun shy about that. So.
So in in regards to the contract, I know there had been some contact with some council members regarding, uh, if we wanted to do bids on it, et cetera. And I spoke with the administrator, and I think going forward, when any time that we get a contract similar to this, uh, whatever would be considered a larger type of contract. If the current, uh, contractor wanted to submit their renewal, um, proposal, that's fine. It 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 would then be kept, uh, with the administrator, uh, and we could at that point determine at the appropriate committee if we're satisfied with the services, if we're satisfied with the new agreement. And at that time, if we would like to put it forward for RFQ, RFP, uh, we would be able to do such. At 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 this point, I'm I'm very happy that this is being negotiated and settled well ahead of the sunset of the agreement. But in the event that the appropriate committee or or anyone wanted to put it out for RFP, RQ, they had already submitted, it had already been published as to what their figures would be, and that would be an unfair, you know, competitive advantage to anyone else wishing to put in a proposal. And I might add that the administrator said this is a, um, uh, a good agreement, uh, going forward. Um, you know, it was asked, are there inadequacies in service, et cetera? You know, certainly there's times where a driver may be on vacation, he may get a substitute, they may miss a street, they may have a piece of paper fly out of the truck. But overall, all the feedback that I got from, uh, Public Works and, uh, the council members was overall satisfaction. So here we have before us this new agreement, so.
I have a motion to, I would like to make a motion to approve the sanitation and recycling agreement with Harders Fox Valley Disposal for a five-year term of service and authorize either the mayor of, or the administrator to sign the contract.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
I just have one comment too. I would have liked to have seen the agreement, uh. The problem that I had too was that the agreement was in the packet with the, with the prices and everything on there. So it made it, the individual contact and me said it made very difficult. Um, so in the future too, I would like to see that posted without any dollar figure, so if someone wants to bid on it, they can do that, because now we're stuck.
And just to be clear too, in a, in a renewal of agreement, it is not required to have an RFP. It would have been if the council and or committee wishes to do that in a particular situation, but when it's a reasonable like that, we did not have to. What's the total, what's the total dollar figure of the contract?
It's, uh, numbers. Um.
It was translated into, since actually translated into, uh, per per unit.
Per unit, yes.
It was not tax, it was not. Uh, the figures were not listed as a total contract figure, if I'm not mistaken.
No, moving forward, you know, how how can we currently, like you said, you can renew it, but I I'd like to see, I'd like to see competitive bids, keep everyone honest. Well, and and we can, we can do that on any contract, and that's why I had asked the administrator and Nathan as well that if you know, any other type of new, uh, renewal were to come forth, if the contractor submits the proposal, that's fine. Uh, but keep it in confidential and let the committee, the appropriate committee or or council as a whole determine if we want to put it out for RFPs. We may not want to, and we don't have to, but if we do, we would then have that option. And so going forward. I'd like to see. Yes, agree. Options. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Uh, please call a roll.
Alder Woman Nelson?
Hi.
Alderman Conley?
Hi.
Alderman was Nikki?
Hi.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Blaham?
Yes.
Alderman Brewster?
Hi.
Alder Woman Shelton?
Hi.
Motion carried. Eight F, approve school resource officer agreement with Kiwanee School District for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Uh, yeah, the, um, Kiwanee schools have, uh, wished to retain the services of our city police department and specifically our officer, uh, Scott Chudel, who's been school resource officer for what, eight years?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Well, this will be the eighth year. Um, they've agreed to pay for his services for up to eight hours. They've agreed eight hundred hours, I should say, eight hours. Uh, eight hundred hours, yeah. Um, including an hourly bonus that they've built into the program for one dollar an hour for every hour that he's actually in the schools. Um, the contract which is attached was signed by the school district for the proposed cost of forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for the year. Um, just as a basis, the the SRO premium was also approved by the union, uh, so they have no problem with this. So, sure, clear.
All right, uh, so we have a motion to approve the school resource officer agreement with Kiwanee School District for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
I will.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Brewster? Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Alderman Shelton?
Hi.
Alderman Brewster?
Hi.
Alderman Blaham?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman was Nikki?
Yes.
Alderman Conley?
Hi.
Alder Woman Nelson?
Hi.
Motion carried. Eight G, adopt a resolution authorizing agreement between Officer Brian G. Gale and the city of Kiwanee regarding the purchase of a retired police canine.
Uh, yeah, this is one of those weird leftover things. Um, Charlie has actually been retired for, uh, I don't know.
A year now.
A year. Here, and.
Chase is no longer a rookie.
Officer, Officer Gale is, has basically been in possession of him for over a year, although he's technically considered city property. Um, the reason to do this is so that we, um, give him over, so he, it's a formal transaction, so he actually becomes Officer Gale's actual property, his actual pet.
And liability.
Yes, and liability, that's the big piece.
But, um, bills.
Right, so that we can, uh, hand it over again, so. Uh, that's what the opposite, that's what we've elected to do, and it's just a basic transaction, just to get this done, one dollar.
Open a motion.
A second.
Brewster Brown, second. Any further discussion? Uh, take a roll, please.
Alder Woman Nelson?
Hi.
Alderman Conley?
Hi.
Alderman was Nikki?
Hi.
Alder Woman. Alderwoman Brown. Alderman Blaha.
Yes.
Alderman Brewster.
Hi.
Alderwoman Sheldon.
Hi.
Motion carried. Eight H, approve additional improvements in furniture for the Kiwanee Pierhead Lighthouse by the Friends of the Kiwanee Pierhead Lighthouse.
You wanna.
Robin.
Write a description.
Well, um, wrote it up, huh?
Yeah, I um.
I'll, I'll throw in.
How heavy is the desk, that's what I want.
Between two hundred and three hundred pounds is what I was told, which I don't know. He said he went from six people to four people moving it in, I don't know.
Hopefully I'm breaking anything. Trying to get it over that.
Well, I don't think the railing should be a problem, I guess, I my my concern is I don't want anybody to get hurt, I want us, the city liable, I don't know what that, that was my concern.
Uh well, they would be covered under our blanket of policy i- in regards to doing that, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so then.
Um, yeah, and this is um. Yeah, the the furniture is one thing, I guess, the the lighting is absolutely good idea.
Yes.
Yeah, perfectly appropriate without.
We don't need a labor and it's just the materials list that you see here.
And and I I I have. Had conversations with the Coast Guard about it, and we were, because we were supposed to turn the meter over to the city that was part of our agreement, and they said. Unless you're lighting up the, uh we don't worry about it.
And then whoever the the commander was at the time also, it said the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just an unwritten.
They're like, they're not, they're not gonna be concerned with this, cuz they're responsible for the light, and they're, so anything we do out there, you know, they said, no. They're not worth concerned with it, and you know, um it was approved by the historic architect, and so that's.
That's what is the significance of the desk? How is it relative to the Kiwanee Lighthouse, other than somebody wanting to donate it?
Somebody wants to donate it, I, you know, in. Just um.
Uh, I mean, I guess the reason I bring it up, Robin, is because everything, you know, whether being on the register and everything being historically correct, all the way down to Barry Nelson making.
Yeah.
Handles and this and that, that if something is gonna be in the lighthouse, I think it should be. Uh relative, at least to the era, particular nautical lighthouse things, you know, something that was maybe a lighthouse keeper's desk at a different location. We're not likely not gonna get any Kiwanee authentic stuff, although we may one day, but.
I think it looks better than the table, that's all.
Yeah, well, and that's, the one, the one problem though too is is it's taking so many people to move it in. It will take that many people to move it out, that was one thing the historic architect had said, you know, you're moving a piece of furniture that's. Gonna take a lot to move out if you have to move it out. So I don't know, that's, I don't know, that's why. But we don't have a donation policy either in place, so these would be things that maybe that's what we have to address.
Well, it would, it would likely go before the public property committee.
Okay.
Type of direction, um I think in the case here, I mean, and it would come from the lighthouse committee, right? Reaching to do something, and obviously having the the donation labor from Dan's Electric. And uh, everything that he's doing there is fantastic, you know, much appreciated on behalf of the city. Uh, I guess, I don't know what anybody else thinks, I mean, I've been a part of that lighthouse since the city acquired it, and I think it it's. Important to maintain it in the manner of what it was, you know what I mean? A- and as close as we can. Is it better, like Eric said, than what's in there? Well, maybe so, but maybe. Maybe neither, I I don't know, you know, I mean, if it's a display case, obviously those are different things. If the lighthouse committee feels that, you know, they really want it, I'm not gonna say, you know, we shouldn't, but I guess. I'm not hearing a real strong affirmative from.
Well, they didn't really vote on it, yes. I know, but someone making one that is a replica of an elder, I know somebody, I think Barry Nelson's pretty crafty with wood, yeah. I mean, I'm just saying it's an option that could make it look, yeah.
More authentic.
Very authentic, but it's a replica. I can bring that back to them, and say there were concerns, he wants to get it out there, but for the beginning. And I guess the thing is, is the idea was that um being able to put merchandise on it and things like that, but it's very clearly stated in the. Airs report that I have, that this still not being moved into a gift shop, so. I, you know, I, and that is one thing we discussed, that we're walking a very fine line there.
And I think with with regards to that, and I don't know, with the tug being on the historical register also. It was kind of thought that the tug could have. Merchandise for both, I understand it's two different committees, but you know, working together, cuz those are the bookends, that's the way it was looked at, is that's bookends. The tug is obviously open my everyday, basically, the concern there is self-guided tours, so you don't want things to get lifted. That, you know, so. All your merchandising gifts, I guess, would be something of concern, and out of the lighthouse, they're not gonna move.
Well, and I think the the point is too is, is I don't know that we sell that much during tours, we sell more if they do, like the garden show, Chris Kindle Mart, I think that's where a little more merchandise sell. Moves, you know, I'm, you know, we do sell some, but.
T-shirts and sweaters.
T-shirts.
Especially on a cold day.
Yeah.
Do you wanna review the desk idea with the committee and see if there's more thought, I think Kathy brought up a good point, you know, maybe some of your donated monies and. Maybe some donated time from an individual.
Okay.
Could really make a, something special.
Okay.
Unique.
Do you want to move uh to do the installation of lighting fixtures on the first floor?
Okay, we have a motion to, basically you're authorizing the bill from Dan's Electric at six hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Well, that'll be paid, that's.
It's not the council stuff.
That's.
Oh, we're just authorizing the work to be done.
Right, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, so no dollar amount, we're authorizing the electrical work to be done. We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Wendy, all right, so.
Okay, and I would like to.
We have a motion in a second, though, uh so then, discussion, go ahead.
Well, I. Let's just roll on this, and then if you allow me to just bring something else up.
Sure, sure, okay, uh we have a motion and a second, uh any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, um you did say about us getting donated, anything, what what happened, a lady did contact me from Lakewood, Colorado, the same subdivision that my sister lives in out in Colorado, which is very strange. But she has, her grandfather was the first lighthouse keeper, and she sent his photo and his baby photo to me. But um I brought it to the history center because we can't keep it out at the, you know, it'll get damaged there, but yeah, so we are getting some significant.
That's great.
Yeah, it was very exciting, very beautiful frame, the the rounded glass on it, and it's.
So she sent the frame, the whole thing, I saw the picture, I thought it was just a picture of it.
She sent, she sent it, the whole entire thing, and then she had a number of other photos in there, which was very kind of her, very, you know.
Fantastic.
And and we're gonna reimburse her for shipping, I believe, to the friends group, but yeah, it was, so we are getting, as things are picking up, we are getting some significant, so it would be nice to have some really nice. Articles maybe that are significant to that, and I will bring that up with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate it, yeah. Uh, item eight J, authorize staff to issue bids for road construction projects.
Do I?
Sorry about that. Approve an ordinance to amend in chapter thirty, fire prevention and protection for consistency with state statutes and to reduce recruitment age.
Yeah, this is um.
Sorry, Noah?
Yeah, our fire chief Joe Nemeczek uh. Uh submitted a set of changes to the chapter thirty of municipal code. To basically update the thing relative to existing state code, state statute, because some of our references are really out of date. Um so a lot of the changes in the code reflect the opposed and the ordinance that is the draft that's presented in some. A lot of these things. Uh in addition, there's some other additions uh on the first page of your action sheet, you notice the fire districts. Um, I have a, I have an image in the, in there showing the fire district is currently listed. Which is uh five blocks of downtown plus block twelve, which is actually where the tug is located. Um, the area south of the railroad tracks, and the railroad tracks obviously are no longer there. And the rest of block twelve is basically Harbor Park, so I'm just gonna recommend we just simply delete that block out of the fire districts, certain reason. Um. In the definitions, um. Chief Nemeczek also pointed out that some of the definitions are, the definition of under fire district. Uh includes terms that are not used in the current modern building codes, so uh we suggested just simply cross-referencing with the international building code. And categories for construction will currently listed, which are one to five from most restricted to least restrictive. Uh next, in terms of construction standards, I had a discussion with with Joe about the. Uh construction requirements, because the current code is fairly restrictive. Um, I included the quote from him that he sent me, because I wanted to make sure this captures it. Um, the current construction type basically requires buildings with masonry walls. Um, or concrete construction with wood floors, uh which is. Um, in our opinion, overkill for what's necessary for fire code, it's not really essential that you have to provide those materials, you can do a steel beam construction with. Passade that still meets your current, your code requirements for fire code, so we're gonna recommend, um. I'm recommending under construction standards that we just simply, every building um within. Or into the fire district shall be of four-hour fire-resistant walls, and constructions provided in the international building code. As adopted by the state of Wisconsin, and that's the construction standard, so we eliminate all these other standards and exemptions. Um, we just simply go with that, because then you're complying with fire code by simply including that standard, there's cross-reference.
So if I could just uh clarify that, then so I'm understanding that what we're going to be doing is the the code would. Defer everything to whatever the current Wisconsin commercial building code is based on fire ratings, right, cuz if, as they updated, ours would always.
Yes, so we've always cross-referenced with theirs, so whatever the current standard is, is the current state of the art as well.
So ours will not go out of date, it'll always just.
Right, so we're not having to, we're not planning this paper chase process.
Thank you.
Uh finally, eligibility, uh Chief Nemeczek proposed a reduction in age from twenty-one to eighteen. Um, or approved by waiver, um. We wanted to, wanted to clarify approved by waivers to who that means. Uh suggested that the, he uh would prefer to be approvable by the fire chief, um. Police Fire Commission is ultimately responsible for confirming new, new firefighters. But if you put it on them, then you're in a position where theoretically somebody could start the, start the training process and then be rejected after you've already started. And since we're paying for this process and everybody, people are spending time and making an effort to do this, it would be better if. They just simply confirmed. Hires, even if they're eighteen or at eighteen, or even if they're younger than eighteen, if they're suitable candidate.
So who authorizes the waiver? Who would sign off on the waiver?
The fire, fire chief would be eligible for the waiver, um. If you.
Cuz I mean, why even have a waiver if it's at the chief's discretion? We wouldn't need a waiver, I mean, it's at his discretion, right?
Yeah, I I think that the trick is we don't necessarily want. It would be one thing for us to at least include in the, in the approval process, so at least we recommend there was at least a sign off from somebody that indicated. Deliberately that the fire chief said, okay, yeah, this person seventeen-year-old is qualified, we think they'll be a good fire. Firefighter in the.
So would that be ratified then by the planning, uh Police and Fire Commission, or commit the council, or?
They would, the Police and Fire Commission ultimately is responsible for hirings, they would. At least sign off on it, as listed currently.
Okay. I mean, I I totally understand that we gotta do. We have to have better capabilities of recruiting, you know, and and any department, i- it's it's really a challenge, so. Um if the age restriction and it's it's meeting whatever the state. Regulations are on the age requirement and what tools and equipment they can use.
It's, it's also of note that certain pieces of equipment, if they're not. Currently licensed as drivers, they're not gonna be able to. Operate the equipment without somebody else being there, so.
Every fireman has to be licensed for each apparatus, correct, Joe? Or not every fireman, to operate it, you need to be certified to operate that vehicle.
Yeah.
So does the state regulate age regulation, age restriction on who could operate eight oh two if they got trained in-house?
Since that's a commercial, you know, I don't know for sure, but I believe there is a restriction on that. Uh part of this stems from the schools. Are, like, not offering an apprenticeship, I guess, program. They're offering more classes through N W T C. That. We would be able to put on, say, a high school student on a floor department. They, during the day, go and take classes at N W T C, this is probably something for another meeting where I can bring in. The superintendent, and he can answer all these questions better. But right now, having a twenty-one's kind of a roadblock for us. Other departments are already pursuing this, and the superintendents of the county are all working together on this. So, it's just kind of one step in that direction. And also, the eighteen to twenty-one thing, I think is just not necessary. Uh, it's funny, eighteen-year-olds, or they're more than qualified. In, within other departments, which are our own county that are firefighters and go through the training process required by the state to. Operate on fire grounds.
So are we looking to put the minimum, minimum age to seventeen or eighteen?
Really, the, that's what the waiver would be for?
For seventeen?
For seventeen or even sixteen possibly, where, again, there's a number of things that have to be drafted up as far as rules and. Of that nature, but to be able to have that waiver available, so we could spring on this apprenticeship, high school student. To assist the department, or be a member of the department.
So then basically tonight, uh are we looking to have the council authorize staff to work with like the city attorney and yourself and the school superintendent to come to something that will be presented at a later date with the actual language? Or?
That's not what this resolution is.
I mean, this is, yeah, this is a resolution, right, I mean, I.
This is not a solution. Now, waiver, again, was. Over that, like I said, there's a lot of things still not worked out between the schools and the fire chiefs association on this. But, having this roadblock in the way is obviously a roadblock to us, now. That will other end of, you know, bringing on somebody under, that's all another conversation, I believe, as far as even the city's insurance, and there's a lot of questions, I don't know. That we do need to get your dog on that.
Question, so it's a.
Go ahead, Casey.
In regards to their ages at this, let's just say they started at in high school at sixteen, probably juniors or, you know, whatever. So are they going to the classes, and that's what you're trying to precipitate is, okay, we're gonna have them all in the classes getting certified, and then come eighteen, they'll be able to actually. Perform the duties as, as fire?
What we would, what we're looking at is limited duties until a certain age, I mean. This is really nothing new throughout the country, or.
Oh, for EMS either, I mean, we bring.
Yeah. And where that line is, that's kind of something I even struggle with, you know, I kind of look at the baseline as the city, they have high school students working for them. You know, they're working on roadways, they're operating equipment, um. Obviously, there's a lot of, this is new, so there'd be a lot of things we'd have to come up with in-house as far as operating guidelines. And how this would actually work.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, do the parents sign the waiver? When you say the waiver, who actually?
That would just be a waiver that they, that the minimum age is eighteen unless approved by waiver.
But if it's under eighteen, do the parents sign off for that, or just the?
Police chief, and the fire chief.
The fire chief would say that, yes, this person has a waiver to be put on. Roster that approved by the fire.
But I think what Jim's question is, is do you need parental consent for a minor?
It's like when I, when I went in the National Guard at seventeen, I had to have.
Yeah.
Joanne just texted me, yes.
Yeah, so there would be a parental consent form, I guess, are are we, are we just looking at with this resolution, I'm just seeing the construction standards being changed?
Section two. One and section two subset two. Eligibility appointments generally, any person having reached the age of eighteen or otherwise is approved by waiver from the fire chief. Desiring to become a member of the fire department may file with the chief an application. In such form, as the police and fire commission may require, each applicant may be requested to file a certificate of physical fitness, name of applicant approved by the chief. As provided by law, should be presented to the police.
I see it, so do we think we're re, I mean, are we, I don't think we're ready for this.
I mean, I'm fine with, I would be fine with the the switching it from twenty-one to eighteen, but the paper seems to have a little bit too much gray area in it.
And and s- at at the, at this time, wait to get more input from the school district? On what we wanna do with these seventeen, sixteen-year-olds?
Yeah, that's fair enough, again, there's a lot of things, I don't know at this point yet, as far as how that program's gonna work, um. Typically, they do have to respond for by a department to skin that program, so. And again, for us, this brings in another thing, since our school district is covered by. By different departments, so it's. Kids that go there, I mean, you know, living Carlton or Fish Mills in coverage district, who breeds. So there, there's a number of things that need to get worked out here, so. So there there's a number of things that need to get worked out here, so you just wanna hold up on that and.
I think of, of the say, do you need any action tonight or anything?
Well, on the eighteen to twenty-one, he does, to be able to get them rolling.
I, I guess I don't have a problem, Joel, with the eighteen, I'm just waiting, wondering if we couldn't simply just strike. Or otherwise approved by waiver from the fire chief.
For now.
For now, yeah. And just strike that uh, strike those eight or ten words out.
I think that would, yeah.
After I read it, I did have a problem with the waiver, too.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the eighteen is fine for me, but I would strike that next of that sentence.
But I think as far as timing, and I agree with you, uh but as far as timing going forward on the waiver. Um I think it, the timing is critical, if we're trying to recruit these kids at sixteen, seventeen, that we would have this figured out. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so they can enroll in these programs and be sponsored through Kiwanee Fire Department, right, so. I mean, next month, we should probably try to have something on the waiver side.
Okay, I'll try to get ahold of Superintendent Britson, some of his schedule is, I'm gonna put it busy as well, but.
Does that make sense to the council? So then, what we would be looking is entertain a motion to approve the resolution as submitted. With striking.
Section ordinance.
I'm sorry, or ordinance?
Yep.
Uh sorry, correction, ordinance. Uh basically, any person having reached the age of eighteen, from that point on, I believe we're striking the rest of that paragraph.
Would just, you, what you wanna do is just strike out the the clause, or otherwise is approved by waiver from the fire chief, so you retain the rest of that. Um cuz the rest of.
You need to file a physical fitness and.
All that's, that's maintained in.
Does that make sense, is that clear to everyone?
Yeah.
So do I have someone that would make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Chad, is that Chad?
Yeah.
Uh any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Most, motion carried. Alright, eight J, authorize staff to issue bids for road construction projects.
Yeah, this is um. Public Works, uh I've been developing a, the start of a road improvements program, uh include milling, repaving projects for roads that. We can do that for it for rather than a full rebuild, uh we had received a project estimate from a. Contractor, who I will not name, um. And Public Works, well, we don't wanna get into a same position as the other contract, um. There's enough budget support, we believe, to do a single project on Fourth Street from Lincoln to Scott Street, which is seventy, seven hundred and thirty foot. Over in your foot span, um or requesting right now is authorization to publish a request for bids for this construction project.
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to prepare and post-publish a request for bids for milling and repaving a block of Fourth Street from Lincoln Street to Scott Street.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I I know we had discussed before, um a list of the. Roads that need done, and from priority level where they are, how are we doing with that?
We haven't started, we can see, yeah, we have a lot of conversation, he's gonna myself and them, so we're currently. C I P time has our goal list. So, but that, we're just like, really only cleared by a lot of whole rebuilds, and I believe that was a lot of.
Well, that seems to be in this spring, a big topic of discussion and to our constituents.
We did talk about that also at a public works meeting.
Lot of that.
We did talk about that, the public works meeting, Nathan and I and the rest of the committee, about uh. You know, putting together some type of, we'll list out what needs to be done, so we can prioritize.
And give us an answer, or give us a way to answer to the people, saying this is what the plan, we have a plan.
And next year we'll have more money, is what Joel just told us.
And honestly, that's probably one of the biggest hurdles, is just knowing what we're gonna have for funding, so we can plan according, and I look at the foot. Let's say I wanna redo Lincoln from Sixth Street to First and Retaven, and we don't have the budgetary money to do so, so kind of. It's gonna give and take on both sides, all the work with the finance committee as well, as a public works, probably maybe Golden Junction on that list, and. But when you said areas, I was like, oh, it's.
Well, even from a financial perspective, you're gonna have to still know yourself, what's the priority, by the condition of the roles.
We had a great meeting where we know we could steal a lot of money from the ambulance.
Yeah.
Put it into the road.
Yeah. Presby, he's heard a lot of that since then.
Currently, right now, and I was kind of seems like we're jumping around, we're getting ready for Center Street and Down Street with the Elrich money. Correct, I'm sorry, with the B I L money, if we were awarded any of that grant, in which we were unsuccessful with. There, I was picking projects that would, and granted, kind of chime in with it a little bit with me, is trying to cater to maybe their high points, you know, so that's why I pick Center Street. It's the main road, with the school safety reasons, et cetera, and I might explore a little higher. Currently, I'm looking at relatively inexpensive projects, as in with no or minimal infrastructure and curb repair. So that's why I'm choosing something like Fourth Street, cuz the curb line needs very little to know curb repair, that's the instructor while it's in. That's gonna give us problems, so we can do a service, recommand holes, seal up catch bases, and I think we can confidently pave over it.
I think if we knew what the criteria was, then we can tell people when they ask. My street's the worst.
It's always gonna be that.
But I think that's why, if we have the criteria and we're transparent as to what the criteria is, it's easy to explain people.
Correct.
So, so if we know what the criteria is, that's all I need to know, is the criteria that's huge, then like.
And the trick is trying to get the water, the sewer and streets and the storm sewer budgets all to align, or my goal would be, we can start doing one or two blocks in budget. Every other, whatever years, you know, whatever we can fit in for a financial situation, right now. With life station maintenance going on, Tony's been aggressively trying to fix water valves that are no longer working and lateral services. There's not a lot of money right now, they go in with the streets, so it's gonna be an ongoing project to coordinate budgets and make them work effectively. So taxpayers are the best bang for their buck.
Further questions? So we have a motion and a second to authorize staff to issue bids for road construction projects, if there's no further discuss- discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carried. Eight K, financial reports month ending January twenty twenty-three, are there any questions or concerns on any of those reports?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry, Wendy.
One, one thing, it's just. It's just really exciting to have this January done, and we're looking forward to having the rest of them, the rest of the months come.
Aggress.
Through, progress, yes.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Are there any announcements this evening, Nathan?
Um so, the topic of the Public Works Committee was setting channel depth and width limits for the United States for Army Corps of Engineers, uh work effort in the future. Myself and Ethan talked, we didn't feel it should have gone on the council, but um agenda as of yet. This is more or less gonna get, given the core chance to see what we want for ideals, so we'll get that mentioned in the meeting, so they can give us better figures, there is some possibility of cost shares. For possible expansion of containment, et cetera. So with that being said, I didn't get to it Friday, I will email all of that slideshow that was provided in the virtual meeting that we did have with the core representatives, you guys, and. If you have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email back, if I can answer them, I'll make sure they're written out and next meeting, that will be answered.
Yeah, the objective of that one is to ultimately have a a. A set schedule, so that every five years they'll come through a dredging, and this will be a a, an agreement that will last for over twenty years, so. Even if they decide to close up shop tomorrow, or after the agreement is approved, then we.
We still have that.
That's still be in place for him next, so our channel will keep getting. Clear.
Any other announcements? Motion adjourned?
I'd make that motion.
A second. Signify by saying aye. This meeting's adjourned.